Meeting called to order. Councilmember Chat.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy, I'm sorry, Councilmember Kendall.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
We are now on to a silent prayer, moment of reflection. Please stand. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the open public meeting, chapter 231 PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January 7th, 2021, and posted on the bulletin board the same day. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We are now on to proclamation. We have a proclamation recognizing Danny McKee, president of the Asbury Park Little League.
Hi, Mike.
Are you taking a picture?
Yes.
Oh, then we send them, please.
Yes.
Good evening, everybody. I am so pleased to be able to read this proclamation to an Asbury Park treasurer. Whereas Danny McKee is an Asbury Park resident and entrepreneur whose dedication to the perpetuity of the city's economic and educational growth is exhibited by his compassion and unwavering commitment to the youth of our community. And whereas our youth are fundamental to the future and sustainability of Asbury Park, and whereas Mr. McKee recognized the need for collaboration between community, base programs, and committed individuals to help the city's youth develop strong leadership skills. And whereas baseball, also known as America's national pastime, is a means to inspire our community's future leaders to develop vital life skills such as diligence, commitment, self-discipline, and respect, attentiveness, teamwork, as well as learning, knowing, and doing your part. And whereas Danny McKee, a man whose name has become synonymous with Asbury Park Little League, has demonstrated through his 16 years as president of the Asbury Park Little League program, the investment of one's time, talent, treasure for our youth has exponential and immeasurable benefits. And whereas through his actions and support of the community, Danny was able to send hundreds of young baseball players to summer camp at the home on the Little League World Series in Williamsport, Pennsylvania, providing many of the players the opportunity to visit colleges and universities, provided life-changing experiences while teaching the sport of baseball to local youth, and building a new baseball facility with the financial support from the community that everyone in Asbury Park can be proud of. Now therefore, it resolved that Mayor Moore and the Asbury Park City Council, by way of this proclamation, acknowledge Danny McKee for the remarkable impact he has had on our youth, and thank him for his many years of outstanding service to the city.
Well, thank you very much. I was going over in my head what I should say here, and this has pretty much said it all as far as what I've done with the Little League program. Thank you, Mayor Moore, and the City Council, Leisha Floyd, who has always been supportive of the program, and all of the community, who without your support, we would not have a Little League program like we do today. We, when I started out 16 years ago, I took my son to sign up, and they said, "Well, he can sign up, but you're going to coach." And that's literally what happened, is coaching and being the president of the league. But in that time, I realized that there's a big portion of our city that is completely undeserved. And so, I set out to change things. And a lot of times, people will say they didn't do something. Well, I'm not patting myself on the back, but I did. And I hope that this continues. I hope that the Little League continues. I hope we're able to continue to send kids to summer camp and have a positive impact on them. When I was a young boy, a young man, I wanted to be president of the United States. And my journey took me in another direction, and I became president of the Little League. I would wager to bet that I've done more good as president of the Little League.
Christmas sweets, Kevin. A little closer, Danny, get a picture. Could we take the masks down, or we can't? Just for the pictures. Go for the picture. Thank you.
Hold on one second, and it is a special night. It's 16 years, but it's been remarkable. I'm hoping some of yours from the Board of Education made a Little League field idea, but I'll put that out there. I haven't ever done before in Asbury Park, and you deserve it. You want to give the microphone to Mayor Johnson, and then pass it around the room, and everybody just say a couple of words, a couple of words, no long speeches, because you have a meeting. But there's so many people that came out here tonight to support you, not to give them the opportunity to have the perfect impact. Mayor Johnson, will you say, you want to? May I just, there was one more point that I forgot to make. My hero are those kids that overcome adversity, that are homeless sometimes, and couch, surf, but who still and succeed, and go on, and persevere. They're not here tonight, but they're my heroes. The heroes are the ones who look through the window and see an opportunity, and go through the door, and take advantage of that. And I appreciate those kids. I'll probably send me a picture of everybody.
Thanks. Very, just very, very quickly, I just want to say, Danny, thank you very much for what you've done. Our most valuable resource are our kids, and you invested in our kids, you invested in generations of our city. So, thank you. Thank you very much.
Well, if you're on the spot.
Come on, Kevin.
Kevin, Will.
Well, you know, when I came into town-
You can come over here so you can get a picture.
Sure.
It's similar, I said, well, yes, the microphone. Let's start along, and everybody come up and say something about Danny, and then get a picture.
Well, when I first moved into town six years ago, I saw the signs that Danny and Will and Little League folks had put together, and I looked at them, I wondered if they could help, and I called, and ever since then, you know, we've been blazing that trail, supporting Danny, and everything was done. So, really appreciate everything, the guidance, and everything that's been done for the league.
I'd just like to say as well that I've been over with Danny for at least 16 or 18 years myself, and I enjoy working with him. It's been a pleasure, and God bless you. I just want to say, congratulations. You already clowned fine Mount Everest, now look for the next Mount Everest.
Good evening. I am a product of Asbury Park. My name is Devisha, and I have to just say that Danny really just takes on that whole piece that you always give 110%. So, working here at Hope Academy Charter School, and then staying on later in the day to volunteer, soliciting your husband to coach, just making it an entire family project in terms of raising our children and keeping our families together. So, thank you, Danny.
Anybody else? Yeah? Thank you. Again, thank you all for coming out for Danny, and everybody have a great evening, drive safe going home.
Ready? We are on to special events applications. There are none. There are none. Matters from City Council. Councilmember Chat.
I'd just like to remind everyone that this Saturday, there is a Kwanzaa celebration, food giveaway, and tree lighting in Springwood Park at 4:30. Hope to see everyone there.
Councilmember Clayton.
I just want to say a special thank you to our local PAL, and Kevin, Kevin Lee, for the work that he's been preparing for us in this, and especially for the top of the Capitol. I think what he's done, the LMPAL is outstanding, and it's a big thank you.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes. I'd like to thank everyone that came out the last Friday and Saturday for the tree lighting. It was just a joy to see the kids and their family out there, and it seemed like the kids, brothers and fathers had more fun than the kids. The kids seemed like they were so full of joy. And to see a kid, when the Christmas tree light up, start crying, but it was, it was tears of joy, and that just made me feel so good, that we had that type of people in Asbury Park. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
So, I just want to say thank you to, I don't know if everyone here knows it, but the VNA is doing booster shots at Convention Hall. I was Christmas shopping, and within probably seven minutes, I had a booster done. So, anyone who didn't get it, they're doing it Saturdays and Sundays through, you know, to January 1.
Mayor Moore.
Yes, there's an add-on to my agenda, and it was just done, thank you, Brad, forget it, done so short notice. So, it's not up on the website or anything, but it's Resolution Number 522. It's in support of a bill that's in committee at Trenton. It's A1834 S2130. This bill would make it easier for family members or low-income buyers to purchase foreclosed homes by removing some of the barriers during share sales. Instead of down 20%, a family member or somebody of low income that would make the commitment to live in the house for seven years would only have to put down 3.5%. And instead of closing in 30 days, they could close in 90 days. So, this is, again, in Trenton. We're going to adopt this tonight. Somebody, woman, Brittany Timberlake, was one of the co-sponsors of this, so it'll go out to our District 11 representatives, the President of the Senate, the Speaker of the Assembly, and to all the sponsors of the bill, as an email tomorrow that we support this totally, and Asbury Park is proud to support this, and hopefully Trenton will move on this before the lame duck session is over, and this will become law and make it easier for either family members to keep a family house and not lose it to a share of sale, or to let other low-income buyers purchase houses in the town they grew up in. So, I think that's very keen. I think it's, again, it's another step that this council's taken to support low income and middle income, and just keeping Asbury Park very nice for everybody. The last thing, and this is, you know, I know it's been on the website, it'll continue to be on the website, January 5th is the reorg meeting, so anybody out there looking to apply for any committees or anything, get in your applications as soon as possible. You can either do it on the website, you can contact the clerk's office, but get those in as quick as possible, because within a week or two, we're going to start, like, looking at them and making recommendations. Thank you.
Matters from the city manager.
I have nothing, Mel.
Matters from the city attorney.
Nothing at this time, Mel.
You're on to the public participation portion of the meeting. Do I have a motion to open the public comment portion of the meeting with a three-minute time limit for each speaker?
Can we open?
All in favor? The meeting is now open to the public. Any members of the public who would like to be heard, please go to the mic, state your name and address for the record, and you all have to bring it.
Sylvia, Sylvia, Asbury Park Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to thank everybody for coming out to the menorah lighting, and also to our downtown tree lighting this year. It was magnificent. It was really, we're just really thrilled and happy to be able to do it again after having to miss both of those things last year. This is our sixth annual menorah lighting, and Rabbi Greenberg from the Shabbat of the Shore came and officiated, and I think we probably had maybe 40 people there, I think, this year. So, that has grown a lot from the first year, when it was just you guys, and Rabbi Greenberg, and Matt, and me. So, really thank you for all of the support on that. And our downtown tree lighting, I think, was magnificent. Santa Claus was just really great spirits, as I guess Santa Claus would be. But I really want to just point out our DPW and our PDNFD, and how they help us with all of these events that we do. DPW, this year, I can't even, I can't thank them enough. You know, Matt and I try to do as much stuff as we can by ourselves, but we had, you know, Robert Bencini, he's just, he's got the department, is magnificent, and they pitch in all the time, and they never make me feel like we're burdening them. There's Greg, and Rob, and Dan, and Don, and Anthony, and John. John's a new guy there, and I had sent my husband down to light the last night of the menorah for me, because I knew he weren't going to be here the next night, and he got there, and that socket wasn't working. And before I got a chance to even call Manny, he had fixed it. I don't even know how he knew it was out. Things like that, they just really mean a lot. So, I wanted to thank everybody, and particularly in our, the fire department, for bringing Santa Claus on the bucket truck. The kids just love that, and, and like Councilman Kendall said, just watching their old faces is amazing. And the police department really just takes care of everything there for us downtown, making sure everybody's safe. And this year, we had the Salvation Army, the day before the event, Major Lyle called me and said, "They have this vehicle, it's kind of the size of an ambulance, maybe," and they offered to do all of the hot chocolate and chocolate chip cookies for us in individual packages, which I had completely forgot. When we hand out those things this year, it would have had to be with the individual packaging. So, that was really magnificent. And Salvation Army here in Asbury Park, over on Asbury Avenue, they're really trying to participate in as many of the things as we have to offer, so I wanted to thank them publicly. And have a great holiday season, everybody.
Thank you, and we thank you for all that the chamber does. Anybody else like to be heard?
Hi, my name is Michael Golds. I'm here for the-
Please state your address.
Rofford, New Jersey, 249 Fairview Avenue. I'm here for the Asbury Park Property Owners Association. Ron Simon CD couldn't make it tonight, so I'm going to deliver a statement on his behalf. The property owners submitted two sets of documents related to the proposed amendments, and each property owners are focused on two important elements. Equity, what is the best balance of regulation that adequately protects tenants and giving them plenty efficiently, as to not have a large impact on the city's budget, which leads to an impact on the taxpayer or property owners who possess to bear the impact of the ordinance. Number two, continuity, what policies were already established in the opposition to the tenant referendum and in the debuffment of the council's ordinance last month? The proposed amendments fail in their origin, as this ordinance has barely been enacted, and there were no indications that pricing violations were occurring, and if they fail in the responsiveness and policy direction that the city solicited from voters and already reacted to, and it fails in balancing interests, as these amendments put a large burden on the taxpayer and property owner, while not advancing the interests of Asbury Park, specifically rental registration. It's a franchise that is not only, that is only about itself. Its purpose here is to justify additional staff members on the city payroll, and to provide the basis for a regulatory regime whose need not only has not been established, it has proved not to exist. But it's not only the city's administration that is hampered by rent registration, it is the property owner. It now has new administrative requirements that most, that most property owners in Asbury Park are not organized to do. In particular, this is true of the small homeowners who are now rooted into the wall. They will have an impossible time complying, and they will get summonses from the new employees, who will be so busy, they'll have to add more employees to write more summonses. And why? Not because there is overcharge of rent, but because the forms are incorrect. In this day and age, who wants or can afford government for the purpose of itself? Why would you have heard, we would have heard that tenants were being overcharged without the forms, and we'll hear if they're overcharged with the forms. The forms are for the issuer. We file open requests that will deny an attempt to find out how much they will cost. We will keep filing until we can tell the taxpayers in Asbury how much of their money that will be spent on them. On vacant CD control, there is no honest justification for intentionally implemented a law whose intent is acknowledged to increase costs with no mechanism to recover them in business. We know that inflation in costs will increase higher than the allowed increases. So, this is literally taking money out of the pocket of one person and putting it into the pocket of another, with eyes wide open to reason. There is no care about the impact on business owners. You're preventing them from protecting their return on investment. It intentionally reduces the value of their property, which will result in tax appeals and burden the single-family homeowners. Studying the issue is key. So, in these two issues, you brought legal, political impacts, as well as economic impacts into play, that would never come into play if the council simply followed the earlier directive and earlier rent control ordinance that was passed. Thank you.
Thank you. See, you know what else? Take a motion to close. Okay, both.
Council Matthew Segman, 700 Emory Street. So, I, you know, I went online and found this today, and, I mean, we were here before Thanksgiving, and we did a public forum. Really, nothing's been changed. It's disappointing. I mean, I tried to, you know, talk with people, and reason, and use logic, and it's just, nothing's really happening. And we got rid of CPI, just made it 310%, which is completely arbitrary. It's not a real metric to control prices. I mean, we're here now, we're trying to make it steady, and we're not using it, and I, I don't know why we would just get rid of that. I've come up with numerous reasons why we don't need all this paperwork and everything else, just giving the city the authority to certify mail landlords and say, "Hey, this tenant came in, we need their information, they think they're being uncharged unfairly." That's it. That's it. It's all that needs to be done, instead of all this red tape, these gentlemen that were here last week, they're not here, sorry. They're all looked that way. But we could save all that money and not have to hire all these people who create all this red tape. You know, it's just, it's like death by paperwork. I mean, I think we're going in a bad direction. I think that what was voted on for the referendum, we're going, we're going more towards the vote that was not enacted. You know, we're going, it was five, and now it's, you know, three or two, and it's, you know, five from three. That, that wasn't all about it. What, why did that change? What was the reasoning? You know, we had, I don't remember if it was voted, hundreds of people voted for that number, and yet, we're just going away from that. And, you know, frankly, it's just, it's disappointing. I mean, I'm going to continue to come here. I apologize, I was late. I mean, the menorah lighting was great, everything you guys are doing is great. I just think that we're being, we're being a little short on this. It just doesn't, you know, again, I even brought up the 15-8, that the hardship rent increase and vacancy decontrol are completely independent of each other. You're doing the facade improvement, and you want to decontrol a unit, they're independent, it shouldn't have anything to do with it, and yet, it's still on this. You know, I mean, I'm going to try to reach out to everyone individually, and try to, not try to bore you to death, but I'm going to try to say the same thing, because, you know, I completely agree with controlling the rent increases on tenants. We as landlords, Peter's here, other landlords, I speak for them, we're all for it. We just want, we don't want death by paperwork. I don't want to get fined, I don't want all this extra taxpayer burden. I mean, we're going to have to talk to the homeowners association, I mean, just work with us here. I mean, if you want to sit and try to work this out, but, you know, asking administrators to write more administration, we're just, it's just going to be paperwork and paperwork, and more tax, more tax money on these people. So, I mean, I'm happy to come up with plans, but give the city the ability to certify mail, we need these leases. I mean, I even brought up how arbitrary asking for square footage was, and it's still here. So, you know, I, I mean, I know we're trying to get it done, it's just frustrating, because I don't, I just see, I just see prejudice, and I don't see any, you know, any of the type of stuff that, you know, other people are talking about, it's just not getting through, so it's disappointing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alex Krusatsky, 610 Sulev. I only want to talk about one aspect of the amendments that I had brought up last time, which is the number of units that are covered. It is very frustrating that that hasn't changed. I even had a relatively favorable conversation with Ron, who represents property owners, about how a renter's a renter, no matter how many units are in the building. You know, and I, we had a community member here last meeting, who had her rent raised by $700, and, and, you know, even another landlord had got up and said, "That's terrible, I wish that there was something we could do." And I think we all agree, there is something we can do, it's called include all renters on this rent control ordinance. And I'm going to be honest, I don't see how you're adequately studying rent control or its efficacy in this community if you are excluding such a large number of renters. I mean, and like, look, and I get it, that if you take the total number of units, many of these buildings, such as Monor Towers, my own, probably eclipses unit-wise, but definitely one of the characteristic aspects of renting here is the ability to rent in a home that is a duplex. And a lot of those families are working-class families that rent there. And we will have to continue to tolerate and be complicit in more and more community members, be it in, you know, two or single, single rental units, coming here and saying that their rent was raised by 700, 800, $900,000, because there is no regulation against them, right? Like, at the end of the day, we're saying that that's okay. If we let this go through with an amendment that does not bring the units down from three to at, to at least two, if not, if not one, we're still going to have to sit here and turn around to these community members and basically just tell them to get out, right? Because that's what we're telling them. We're saying, "We're for rent control, but not for you, just because you happen to have only two units in your building." And I know for a fact that every single member of this city council does not agree with that. I know that every single member of this city council wants every community member to be given every opportunity to stay here, if that's what they want to do, and we're, if you're not going to do it right, right, then, then what are we really doing, right? And if we're going to still tolerate having people come here and have their rent raised inexorbitantly in a real estate market that's very competitive, which is, that's a very feasible reality, as we saw last, last city council meeting, we're basically saying, you know, then you can just go. And again, I do not think that this city council agrees with that, and I think that also, if we're going to adequately study it and get full data back on this, this ordinance should include all renters. I'm happy about the CPI cap, you know, I made the comment last, last city council meeting about vacancy decontrol, but that's about future residents, and this rent control ordinance is about renters here now. And like, let's protect all renters here now, right? And let's continue to manage and maintain this ordinance, covering all renters, instead of leaving some people out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, good evening. Peter Siegel, 1412 Main Street. Hello, everybody. And we find ourselves here again tonight for another council meeting to talk about this issue of the proposed amendments, which I'm glad we're talking about, but I too share Mr. Sigmund's sentiments that it seems that regardless of the dialogue and talking that you guys aren't listening, nor do you care to. It was shocking to see the draft of the proposed amendments this morning that had, like, nothing changed in it and made me feel like the past several months were a complete waste of time and disrespectful to the community in that it resulted in nothing. But that's a separate conversation. But I do want to say that I, I share Alex's comments that it's amazing that this is all being done without being studied, and it should be studied. So I'd like to commend him for suggesting that, because I do agree with that. I mean, it's amazing to me that the original ordinance came into effect in June and three months after, we're talking about making changes? And I say three months because this all started in September with the proposed amendments. Three months later, we're talking about making proposed amendments with zero complaints, with zero allegations of rent overcharges, zero, zero cases before the rent leveling board. You know, we talked about letting this ordinance come into effect and see what the, the effects were and the impacts were and to see how it did. You didn't do that. You waited three friggin' months. You know, thank you. Thank you for putting us through all of that in March and then, you know, just like reversing it, you know, substantively, not even like minor corrections or, or clarifications as what was being marketed to us. They weren't minor corrections and clarifications, they're substantive major changes. And it's horrific to me. And the fact that all the dialogue we've had over the past few months about it has just resulted in nothing is just, you know, I don't even know what you're doing up there or what we're doing out here, because no one's listening to anybody. So I hope that in the next several weeks that we can have some more dialogue and that perhaps it might be, result in a little bit more impact and can be more equitable, because what I'm seeing right now is, makes me feel like we should, just should have gone with a referendum. We just should have gone with that. So thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I wish you guys all happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you second, Mike?
No. Move to close? Second. All in favor? The meeting is now closed to the public.
Let me just say, I think Matt, I think you said there was no changes from two weeks ago. Peter used to acknowledge there was a couple of small changes, whatever. There are changes in the, before it's introduced tonight, Fred will announce a couple of small, what you will call minor changes that happened today. And, you know, if you need an update of anything that had been changed from two weeks ago to now, what you couldn't see in the discussion two weeks ago today, you can get in touch and we'll give it all to you. But, you know, it's obviously there are changes. Thank you.
We are on to the minutes. I have the municipal council executive meeting of November 23rd at 4:00 p.m. Municipal council regular meeting, November 23rd, 6:00 p.m. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Oh, I can't believe it.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are on to the consent agenda resolutions. All matters listed on the consent agenda are presented collectively to the city council and will be considered for approval with one vote. These matters are considered to be routine in nature, there will be no individual discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by one or more council member as to any particular item, then said item shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. On the consent agenda, we have resolution 2021-504 through 2021-506. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Individual resolutions. Resolution 2021-494, a resolution authorizing the city of Asbury Park to implement the competitive contracting process to procure vendors to operate concession stands at Kennedy Park.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2021-507, a resolution approving the payment of bills.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2021-508, a resolution of the city of Asbury Park, the county of Monmouth, the state of New Jersey, providing for the insertion of special items of revenue in the 2021 sewer budget of the city of Asbury Park pursuant to NJSA 40A:4-87, Chapter 159, American Rescue Plan.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2021-509, a resolution authorizing an award to Monmouth County SPCA for animal control services.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2021-510, a resolution awarding a contract to Millennium Communications Group for fiber repair at Bond Street.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2021-511, a resolution awarding a contract to fences by Dente for new fencing at Wesley Lake Spillway East End.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2021-512, a resolution amending the purchase of a server needed for IA Pro software at the police department.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2021-513, a resolution authorizing the replacement of two new VFD units in the odor control system at the sewer plant.
Move it.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2021-514, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a new influent pump needed at the sewer plant.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2021-515, a resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of Asbury Park acting as the redevelopment entity granting an extension of a conceptual approval to Asbury Partners LLC regarding the summer experience installation on Block 3802, Lot 1.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2021-517, a resolution of the city of Asbury Park to enter to an escrow agreement with Interfaith Neighbors for a parcel known as 1403, Lot 10, in the city of Asbury Park, Monmouth County, New Jersey, commonly known as 1276 Washington Avenue.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2021-518, a resolution of the city of Asbury Park approving an escrow agreement binding between the city and Jamal Braverman Building LLC for a redevelopment project at 1201 Memorial Drive, Block 203, Lot 5.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2021-519, a resolution awarding a bid for traffic striping to the Traffic Lines Incorporated.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2021-520, a resolution of the city of Asbury Park and the county of Monmouth, the state of New Jersey, authorizing the designation of various redevelopment area bonds as not being subject to optional redemption.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2021-521, a resolution providing for the combination of certain issuances not to exceed 3,487,741 general obligation bonds of the city of Asbury Park and the county of Monmouth, state of New Jersey, determining the form and other details of such bonds and providing for the sale of such bonds to the Monmouth County Improvement Authority pursuant to the pooled governmental loan program. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2021-522, a resolution supporting pending legislation S2130A-1834, which creates the Community Wealth Preservation Program and expands access for certain buyers to purchase property from sheriff sales. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are now on to ordinances for introduction. The first ordinance is Ordinance 2021-39, an ordinance establishing salary ranges for employees of the city of Asbury Park with a public hearing date of December 22nd.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
The second ordinance for introduction is 2021-40, an ordinance amending Chapter 15 entitled Rent Leveling Regulations of the Code of the City of Asbury Park with a public hearing date of December 22nd.
Move it.
Second.
And as the mayor indicated, did you want me to run through the changes that were made since we had the last meeting on November 23rd?
No, run through the changes made since it's been posted.
Since it was posted. All right, there was just one change made since it was posted, and that is in Section 15-10 dealing with the issue of a hardship appeal. If the hardship appeal is approved by the rent leveling board, it will become effective, the new rent, 60 days after, after the decision of the rent leveling board, previously it was listed as being effective 30 days thereafter. And the determination was made to make that section consistent with the 60-day time period which is listed in 1513, which deals with the annual rent increases, that at least 60 days notice is required to the tenants of an annual rent increase. So there would still be that, that 60-day provision would apply to both the annual rent increase that landlords are entitled to, as well as the effective date of a hardship appeal increase if it's approved by the rent leveling board.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second. I will now move on to roll call. Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
No.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
No.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are on to second readings, public hearings. The first public hearing that we have up is Ordinance 2021-38, which is the 2021 Transportation Update Ordinance. Do we have a brief overview of the ordinance before we open it up?
This ordinance is, this is loud. This ordinance is our annual transportation ordinance that was recommended by the parking committee, and it basically adjusts, adjusts some of the metered parking areas and metered parking zones in the city. Adjust for account for existing parking regulations in the city, such as existing handicap spaces that were not in the code, as well as time-limited parking, which was not in the code. Adds a penalty related to the Baines Avenue Garage for leaving a vehicle after closing hours. It adds a no parking zone for the Bradley Elementary School for drop off, pickup and drop off of students, and it lowers the speed limit on Memorial Drive between Monroe Avenue and Sixth Avenue to 25 miles per hour.
Okay, anybody like to?
Do I have a motion to open the public hearing on Ordinance 2021-38?
Move to open.
Second.
All in favor?
Anybody like to make any statements or question us?
Does anybody have any questions regarding the ordinance 2021-38?
CNN, I make a motion to close.
Move to close.
Second.
All in favor? The public hearing is now closed on Ordinance 2021-38. Do I have a motion to adopt the ordinance 2021-38?
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall. Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are on to adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Can I just say one thing before we go? I voted no on this ordinance because I absolutely agree with everything I've heard tonight and some of the comments I've heard up until now. And so I also felt like we rushed this through, like we rushed through the first one, didn't have enough data, and so that's why I voted no. That's it. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is now adjourned.